Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're into the approval of this evening's agenda. Are there any modifications or unapproval? Councilmember Ashby?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion of this evening's agenda? It'll be a little bit of a long meeting tonight. We've got presentations, so I hope everybody is prepared. And so with that, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We're to our citizen, first citizen comment period, and it's for anything that's on this evening's agenda. Is anyone wishing to address the council this evening before we start our business? And actually, your item is left on the consent agenda, so you're more than welcome to address the council, though.
I'm here representing Moonbeam's Tais Cafe. We're, you know, in Port Orchard, we're from Port Orchard, and trying to serve the community, make everybody happy, and, you know, fill their bellies. I think that the truck being up at the courthouse would be an addition for the city, maybe less people, less traffic going downtown, I hope, when they come into the truck, take a little bit of the traffic off the seat, the city streets during lunch, and maybe in the morning.
Donovan, tell us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Donovan Byford. Sorry. You know, there's about a thousand people that go through the courthouse doors each day, there's 600 employees up there. You know, if we can serve their lunch, their breakfast, maybe help out the community, take the traffic off the street, that's about all I got.
Okay, thanks for your comments.
Yep.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by councilmember Deener. Further discussion of the consent agenda, and as Donovan's item is item C on the consent agenda, so thank you for your comments. And all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We are on to this evening's presentation. So, Mr. Bond, you have a presentation for us.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, the city's consultant, SCJ Alliance, is here to present-
Nick, could you bring that microphone just a little closer?
The city's consultant, SCJ Alliance, is here this evening to present the draft Bethel and Cedric Corridor Plan. The plan is now available publicly on the city's website, and we will be opening the plan up for comment through September 25th, at which time the city council, we have scheduled a hearing on the draft plan. So tonight is an opportunity for the consultant to present all the work that has gone into this, and sort of the preferred alternative that has been arrived upon, and for you to ask any preliminary questions about the plan, and if we want to take it to any committees for further discussion, or if you have questions at a later date, we can certainly take those over the next month and a half. So with that said, Elizabeth, are you up first?
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. Can you, is this good?
If you could just identify yourself.
I am Alyssa Beth Wooton, and I work for SCJ Alliance, and Eric Johnston is also here, and he may chime in as need be. So, there's a lot of material, this is, the plan, like Nick said, is on the website now, so you will be able to review it. I'm gonna try and like cover the highlights here tonight, and you can feel free to ask questions along the way, I think that'd probably be easier. But I would like you to think of this as an introduction to the plan, and you have, there'll be a month to review the materials, and we'll be hearing more comments throughout the public review period and during the public hearing, so. Let's see. The notes, the notes presentation thing always confuses me. Okay, so just as a refresher, we've been here before talking about this plan, but the corridor segments are Cedric between SR-16 and Bethel. It's a principal arterial with Class III access management designation, it's a commuter route and a freight route, and it connects to the Southworth Ferry. And then Bethel Corridor between Cedric and SR-166 or Mile Hill Drive. So that's a principal arterial in the city, it's mixed-use corridor with commercial access, and it's a freight and a bus route. When we've spoken with the council, and in our public survey, we asked, you know, what is this street character types for these two corridors? And Bethel Road is, was thought of as being a commercial access corridor, a little more importance on the multimodal elements of the street, whereas Cedric is predominantly seen as a commuter route in the community, a little bit less of the multimodal, and a little bit less of the commercial access. So this kind of helps shape our thinking about what we are gonna do for these two corridor segments. This is just a timeline and the outreach process that we've gone through. We started to kick, kicked it off in September with a working session with you. We put up a public project webpage that's been up since September, that's had updates. We had a public open house in October with fifty, over 50 attendees. We had another city council working session where we talked about the potential profiles of the corridor, and what your preferences would be, looking at some of the operational analysis that we had already done at that point. We then had a community survey, got over 600 responses to help shape the recommendations. We've also been coordinating in June and July with WashDOT, Kitsap Transit, PS, Fugitive Sound Energy, South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, and the South Kitsap School District, so people who really have, operate on the street, and we wanted to make sure that they saw the draft plan, and we could incorporate their comments. And then, we're here tonight, and as Nick said, we'll be having a public hearing in So some of the initial data that we collected was the crash history, I think you've seen some of this, this, the big takeaways are that Cedric Road, Cedric Road has about twice as many crashes per mile as Bethel Road, and they are predominantly, 75, 73% of them are rear-end crashes, which signifies that there's congestion on the corridor. Bethel Road has, the, the crashes were more concentrated at intersections, major intersections, and 34% of those were turning and entering crashes, which is twice as common as we saw on Cedric, so that told us that their intersection control is a big issue, and access to commercial properties and things like that is a bigger issue. Then we also did a traffic volume forecast. This is kind of small, but we took a pretty conservative approach to forecasting the volumes in 2040. We included the revised, the proposed revised zoning designations, which include mixed-use and commercial and higher-density residential. We included all the tip projects, and the six-year tip as being completed in the 20-year timeframe, and we basically fully realized the development potential of the area. So that's what the forecast was based on, and what we found was that Cedric Road, while it today has the highest volumes, will still have the highest volumes in 2040, but it will only see a 45% increase in traffic, whereas Bethel Road, the southern section, south of Lund, will see an 85% increase, and that's due a lot to the land use along the corridor and the potential for development there. In the north section of Bethel sees a 55% increase, it's a little bit less, there's a little bit less development potential on the north side, and a lot of that is still just through traffic, not necessarily development on the corridor itself, but that the added development in the southern portion, you know, adds traffic to the northern portion. So when we, we used that data to kind of approach each of those three segments that we identified with an alternatives analysis, looking at three key street decisions. One was based on street character, and knowing that, you know, we needed pet and bike access on both corridors, and that was kind of a non-negotiable, we, the big question was, are we gonna have one travel lane in each direction, or two travel lanes in each direction? And you can see here, there's like pros and cons, or advantages, to either of those, those decisions, so those are some of the things that we thought about. The second was intersection control, are we looking at signalized intersections or roundabout intersections? The third is access management, and we, access management is a whole host of things, driveway spacing, and, you know, right-in, right-out access is one, one piece of that, but what we were looking at is, are we gonna provide a center turn lane here, and provide access at driveways, or are we gonna have a raised median where only access is provided at the intersections, and U-turns are provided at the intersections? So those were the three basic considerations we posed for each of the three study segments, and this was our preferred alternative. So Bethel Road North, we decided, oops, to keep the existing condition, which is a two-way left turn lane, there's a little more dispersed development up there, it's not as high-volume commercial development, so the two-way left turn lane allows a little more access. In addition, there's a long distance between intersections in that section, so if we don't provide two-way left turn access, then the diversion is much, much longer. For Bethel Road South and Cedric Road, the raised median was the alternative that we chose, so controlling access at the driveways and allowing U-turns and access at the intersections. For all three segments, we went with a roundabout approach. The roundabouts, this wide nodes, narrow roads concept is kind of what we built it on, so, you know, roundabouts allow you, they process traffic a little bit more smoothly and more efficiently than signals, and you can have, if they're sufficiently wide at the node to accommodate, to operate well, then you can have a narrower roadway profile between intersections, which means that you have more space to do other things, like provide a wider sidewalk, or do landscaping strip, or manage stormwater, or put bike lanes in. So that was our approach to, we wanted roundabouts on all the quarters. It's also a driver consistency thing, a lot of, a lot of reasons why roundabouts, they're mostly, they're considered much safer than signalized intersections. And then for the street character, we were looking at whether providing one lane or two lanes in each direction, we decided that Bethel Road, which the council had, had advised that they didn't really want to see more than three lanes on Bethel, it was meant to be a more walkable, easier-to-cross neighborhood kind of street, and develop more in that vein, whereas Cedric Road is a commuter route, it carries more, the most traffic, and it connects to SR-16, so that, we decided would be the two lanes in each direction profile. So this is, oops, sorry, making me sick. So this is a schematic of what we've proposed in the draft plan. The typical section in the north Bethel area, which is also the proposed section for the south of Lund Bethel roadways, so that's just something to keep in mind. The, you have sidewalks, bioretention swale for stormwater management, a bike lane, one lane in each direction, and a center turn lane. Bethel Road South, so between Lund and Cedric, you have a raised median with landscaping, you have one lane in each direction, bike lanes, same, same other elements with bioretention swale and sidewalks. And on Cedric, we have two lanes in each direction, it's pretty much the same profile, but we also have a wider sidewalk, because in that section, we felt that the bike lanes might not be sufficient for people who are not comfortable riding in heavy traffic and up big hills at speed, so we proposed a wider sidewalk for people who have kids with them, or people who just aren't as comfortable riding on the street in, in that The next thing we did was, we did a sensitivity analysis using roundabout modeling software. We did it for kind of three reasons, we wanted to figure out when intersections were gonna fail, as they are today, and then use that to phase the project. We also wanted to develop or identify any potential interim roundabouts. The Mile Hill Drive Roundabout was designed as a two-lane roundabout, it only operates as a one-lane roundabout today, so we wanted to see if there were opportunities for that in the Cedric, or the Bethel Corridor as well, where, you know, maybe opening day, it's not gonna be a two-lane roundabout, but in the future, it will have to be. And so we, and then the third thing was refining that full build design, so what in the horizon year should these intersections potentially look like as roundabouts? Which ones can be single lanes, and which ones can have to be multilane? So, well, I didn't talk about the phasing, but the first phase that we identified was the Salmonberry/Blueberry. Salmonberry is failing pretty much today, and meets warrants for, for control, so that was one of the first things, and it would include upgrading Ramsey to allow for D2 or during construction. Second would be the widening of Cedric. The Cedric intersection is very congested, mostly due to the fact that you can't make a double left turn, the left turns going from Cedric onto Bethel are very high, and it's hard to accommodate a double left turn there, because Bethel is one lane. So improving that intersection and improving the rest of Cedric was phase two. Phase three would be connecting the two phases, those two phases. Phase four is the Lund to Salmonberry on Bethel, and phase five is the Bethel North We did preliminary cost estimates to kind of get a sense of how much of each of these phases would be. This is, there's a couple things in here that aren't included, and there's more details in the online version in terms of, there's an appendices with the cost estimate breakdowns, but this gives you a general sense of what we're looking at in terms of cost for the, for the per phase. And then there were a number of design considerations that we thought about, they're all listed here, but those are like all the subsections within the design considerations chapter. I'm not, I don't have time to go through all of them right now, but I'm gonna pick a few to go through, and hopefully that will satisfy some questions you might have, but we're open to questions on any of these, obviously. So the first is transit. We did meet with Kitsap Transit Planning Group to talk about what their plans were for the Bethel Corridor in terms of transit access, as well as Cedric, and we talked about their operations, and they had reviewed the corridor plan, the draft corridor plan. So after that conversation, we kind of came up with this, three treatments that would be applied in different parts of the corridor. So the first would be a Type A treatment, where that happens in the north section, where there's a two-way left turn lane, so it would just be an in-lane stop, they would block that lane of traffic, but vehicles could get around them in the center turn lane if they needed to. We would recommend that, you know, mid-block crossings be considered at transit stops, and that Refuge Islands be considered at those mid-block crossings in the center turn lane. Type B, which is less common, but that's in the Bethel South corridor segment, and that is when, so when there's a raised median, the concern that transit had was that if there's a raised median, then vehicles, that we, you could, okay, there's two things you could do, you could put a bus pullout, which would give a place for the bus to pull over, and the vehicles could get by while they're doing loading and unloading, or you could stop in lane and block the traffic. And Kitsap Transit was very concerned about getting back into traffic if there was a bus pullout, so we went with an in-lane stop at these locations. So these are mid-block locations where the bus would stop in lane and block traffic. And right now, there's 30-minute headways on Bethel, so every 30 minutes, there's potentially one to three-minute stoppage for the bus. There is plans to increase that, that to 50-minute headways in the future, so that's just something to keep in mind. And then the last type is Type C, which is an in-lane stop at a multilane roundabout, which allows us, as on the approach to the roundabout, it widens into two lanes. And in the right lane, you can have a bus stop, where the, where vehicles are still able to pass the bus, and it would be set, there's actually a rendering of it here, it would be set far enough back that vehicles could still see the crosswalk and make sure that there's not pedestrians trying to cross, and that they could, if they were trying to make a right, there'd be room for them to get over safely and make a right in front of the bus without cutting the bus off. So, design, the design, these are all conceptual right now, but these are the treatments we're proposing. The other design consideration that we wanted to highlight was the roundabout design. There's a few features for all roundabouts, whether they're single lane or multilane. Buses and trucks were, they were designed so that buses and trucks can navigate the roundabout using a single lane, so they don't have to straddle two lanes. For larger trucks that might come through the corridor, there's the mountable truck apron around the raised center, so, and also for emergency response, so that they can get around any kind of congestion or stalled vehicles. And then, there's also bike ramps at the entry and exit of every roundabout, so that, or every approach, so that bikes that don't want to take a lane through the intersection can get onto the sidewalk, navigate the sidewalk, and get back onto the roadway, or use the pedestrian crossing to get to the other segment. For multilane roundabouts, there's two things I wanted to point out, so when there's two lanes of traffic that a pedestrian is crossing, we would recommend rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which are pedestrian-activated, to just make sure that there's visibility. It's also important for the blind community, who has a little bit more trouble navigating roundabouts at those locations. And the second thing is the zipper merge, because the wide nodes, narrow roads concept means that you're widening the roundabout, the approaches at the intersection, but you're also narrowing them back down once they get through the intersection. So it requires two lanes to turn into one lane. And the way that they're designed is so that they're short enough, the distance of, you know, exiting the roundabout and merging is short enough that people aren't able to get up to high speeds, but it's past the pedestrian crossing, so they're crossing after, they're not thinking about merging until after they have made sure there's no pedestrians to stop for. And we have a video, which I think would be helpful to show.
And I guess while you're waiting for the video, I think it's important to mention that when people drive through roundabouts, human nature is that they don't want to be next to somebody, somebody will either slow, slow up, that's a southern thing, slow up or speed down, so that you're not next to each other. So by the time you're exiting, you're already in position to, that's why they call it the zipper.
And there's also no, it's not, a lot of times you'll see, and this is in roundabouts today, there's a clear, this left, right lane is ending merge left, or something to that effect in the signage, and we would recommend not doing that. We don't want someone to feel like they have the right of way, it's more, it's better psychologically if they both just are like, oh, we both have to become one lane, and it doesn't, there's less jockeying at the intersection if they don't have that indication. So this-
That doesn't happen.
It doesn't often happen. So this is-
It's a roundabout in Wisconsin, isn't it?
Yes.
I used to live near there.
Oh, really? We have roundabouts like this in Washington, but they just don't have as good of videos.
Perfect reason for a drone.
All right. So, um, we'll wait and see, I think about 45 seconds in, you'll see some good action, but you can see that trucks are navigating the roundabout just fine. I think if you watch this approach, you'll see the zipper merge down here. You can see that this, see the, there was, there was some zippering happening over here. You can see that the dotted, the pegatrac line goes a little bit past, just a little bit past that pedestrian, and that's where, here we go, here's some zippering. I mean, speeds in roundabouts are pretty slow, so people, while they might feel uncomfortable going through them, because it's a little bit, you know, out of the normal, they're going slow, so the crashes that we see in them are much less severe, they have much less fatal crash rates, so this is a testament to that. You see these cars coming through. This guy making a crazy left at the last second. Okay, I think that's about it. Oh, there was a resume slideshow, oh, great. Emergency response was another design consideration that we wanted to draw to your attention. We did talk, or we coordinated through email with the deputy chief at South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, and there were two concerns that they raised that had to do with the raised medians, whoops, on Cedric and Bethel. The raised median limits left turns, that's its purpose and intended purpose, but it also means that they can't make, their emergency response times are gonna go up if they aren't able to make those left turns at anywhere but the major intersections. The other issue is that on Bethel Road, the raised median created a narrow curb-to-curb roadway width, because you have a travel lane and a bike lane and a curb on either side. So there were two ways we adjusted our design to accommodate their operations, and they, they have responded, saying that they think this meets their needs. On Bethel Road and Cedric Road, where there's a raised median, we would propose to provide a clear area with a mountable curb, where there's no landscaping about every 400 feet to allow them to make left, to make U-turns to get to the other side of the road if they need to. And then on Bethel Road, where there's only one lane, this isn't an issue on Cedric, where there's two lanes, they can get by just fine on Cedric, but on Bethel Road, where there's only one lane in each direction, we would, the median would be constructed in a special way, so that there's a one-foot concrete apron, and then a mountable curb, and then they'd have a little bit, if they needed to encroach on the landscaping, they'd have that space, too. So the effective width without encroaching on landscaping becomes 19 and a half feet. And the, the big concern for us was that if we just widen the corridor, A, that's more expensive, and B, it makes the corridor seem wider to drivers, and it would encourage speeding, and kind of take away that traffic calming benefits of having one lane in each direction. So the concrete apron is gonna be a different color than the asphalt, and that will still visually narrow the road, so this is the compromise that we came, came up with for the emergency response concerns. Just something to think about, because it would take city council approval, would be that in the future, when Cedric, or when Bethel is more built out, you might want to consider a speed limit reduction, potentially to 25 instead of 35, what it is now. It would just align better with the walkability of the nature of the street and the calmer traffic that we're trying to accomplish, and fatality rates go drastically down, even with 10, 10 miles per hour, so. And then parking, so we opted to not provide on-street parking on either corridor. There's benefits, there's pros and cons to on-street parking, which we've listed down When we surveyed the community, 80% of the community said that there's plenty of parking on Bethel in the places that they want to go, because all of the businesses and developments, they require off-street parking, so there isn't an issue there with parking, and we expect that to continue, the parking requirements will remain the same. And we expect that to continue, the parking requirements will remain the same. Um, and we felt that the, you know, parking causes friction when people are making parking maneuvers, they reduce capacity, and Bethel especially is already, you know, we're making it a calm street on purpose, and we don't want to make it any more congested than we have to, and we felt that parking, um, didn't belong on the street here. But we do encourage that off, off of those two main corridors, on side streets that get developed, that, um, that we consider on-street parking on those kind, the side street network. Um, and so, we talked about the raised median, which is, um, here, this is in terms of access management, we've talked about the benefits and why we decided to do, um, the raised median versus the center turn lane in different locations, but the other thing that we wanted to pull, draw your attention to was the minimum spacing requirements between access points. On Bethel, on Sedgwick, the Wash Dots Class Three designation has a minimum spacing requirement of three hundred and thirty feet, and we proposed to maintain that, um, unless they decide to change it, and then we would adopt that standard. And Bethel Road, we would implement a minimum spacing of two hundred feet between driveways and intersections. And then finally, I just wanted to show, we made a, a video, um, like a flyover of the corridor, so this is the first phase, this is, um, between Salmonberry and Blueberry, and it's, I mean, we are in a conceptual design phase, technically, but we've had the opportunity to take this a little bit further than, than, um, that would imply, and this is still, you know, a visualization of a conceptual design, so it's not, you know, it looks very realistic, but there's lots of, um, details that would still need to be figured out.
Remember, we're flying, that's why they don't yield for the pedestrians in the crosswalks.
So the car is traveling at about twenty-five, and then slows down at the intersections.
You should have stopped.
And we, um, kind of based the land use on what potentially could be there, this isn't what's there today, but you can see the, the bike ramps, and you can see the median, and we're going to get to a mid-block crossing, which is, um, in alignment with the city's mid-block crossing policy and standards. And here's the bus stop, and what, what it could look like to come around the bus. The cars don't move, that's part of the problem with the visualization, so you can't, can't have cars on the street you're on, otherwise we'd just be plowing through them, but...
That was Salmonberry.
That was Salmonberry, yeah. We started at Blueberry and we went to Salmonberry, so that was the multi-lane roundabout.
It started at Blueberry.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Blueberry is a single lane roundabout, and Salmonberry was one of the locations where we, was the only location where we identified the potential for an interim design, where it would be single lane on opening potentially, and then have, be built to be able to increase to a, a two-lane roundabout in the future. So after all that, I'd be happy to take questions.
So, questions for Elizabeth? Mr. Clausen?
Yeah, just a couple. One is a roundabout at Bethel and Sedgwick, because Sedgwick has, and it goes down the hill, the topography issue, is that a challenge for putting in roundabouts when you have that kind of grade?
It can be a challenge, and it would require, um, you know, grading work, and there are potential for, um, retention walls, um, a lot, at certain locate, at certain points in the roundabout, but it's not a insurmountable design issue.
Does a roundabout have to be relatively flat or level?
The roundabout itself is, tends to be relatively flat and flat level, yeah.
And the other question is just, uh, back at, at Lund Road in Bethel, where we're making improvements to Tremont to make it a four lane from sixteen all the way through that intersection, was that taken into consideration? Do we know where traffic, how they disperse when they get to that intersection?
The traffic model that the city, um, has on hand in the forecast assumed the Tremont, um, the Tremont work, and it also, it also incorporated the SR sixteen model for the congested corridor study that they've been doing, so it was calibrated on their forecast as well, so it should represent the future of Tremont.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kachary?
Um, are you familiar with Burnham Drive and Deep Harbor?
Oh, not intimately, but...
Like, do you happen to know the traffic counts of that road, just from a comparison standpoint? Because I think we all, that's probably what we're most familiar with.
Yeah.
In a road with multiple roundabouts, is there any comparisons to their design types, traffic counts, just to get an idea of?
Because it does have the raised medium, but it is two lanes and, um...
Slip lanes.
One of the big differences, though, is you've got six roads coming into that roundabout, which makes it in itself a rather...
Definitely, but going up the hill further towards, you know, when you encounter the other ones.
As you get up, yeah.
That's something we can look into, I, I think.
Just from a comparison standpoint.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, I had a question, and, and if you could just help me understand, you had indicated that one of the problems with the intersection at Sedgwick and Bethel right now is that left, you can't put a double left turn lane, because Bethel only has one lane.
Mm-hmm.
How is a roundabout going to relieve that problem?
So, the roundabout will have two, it will have the same, um, the zipper merge that we talked about, so the accept, the accepting lanes will be two at the, at every approach on, at Bethel-Sedgwick, so the, I believe, I'd have to see the design again, but I believe, um, the inner lane is a left, and the, um, outer lane is a through. But part of that is also just that when you have a roundabout, left turns are just processed way better. There's no, you don't need the storage that you need, because it's not, it's not signalized, right? You're not stopping people for a certain period of time, and then having to store them for that period of time, and then having them all, like, I was just at that intersection just now, on my way here, and the person, after waiting in a long line, took like five seconds to go on the green arrow. I was like, haven't you been waiting with me? But like, that, so that, all that inefficiency and stuff that happens at a signal just isn't as prevalent as, as at a roundabout.
Okay. The other comment I would make to the councilmembers is, I have discovered the Cushman Trail, and there is a parking lot at the Cushman Trail, right, well, it's off of Burnham, it's just...
By the power lines.
It's by the power lines there, okay. And when I leave, I have to take the left up Burnham and take the roundabout to come back, to get back on sixteen, and I do not find that cumbersome or awkward at all. I'm very, it, it feels very safe to me, rather than trying to go across a couple lanes of traffic.
Right in, right out.
Another question I had, um, you, when we were talking about the different options for bus stops, you've mentioned the one where we'd be stopping traffic. Do you have a model to predict, you know, based on different traffic flows, what, how that delay will impact the entire corridor? You'd mentioned that a one-to-three-minute stop every thirty minutes could turn into a one-to-three-minute stop every fifteen minutes, as bus routes change, and just, how does that impact the overall flow?
Yeah.
What does that look like? I'd hate to spend all this money on a road, and then we're just clogged up because we've got, you know...
Yeah.
Three-minute stoppages every fifteen minutes.
Get out of your car and get on the bus, and you won't...
Right. Um, yeah, I, it's a really hard thing to model. Um, the, yeah, the way that the model works doesn't do a great job at figuring out delay based on buses and transit. They can, you put in a little parameter, and you'd say how much, how long it's going to block, but I can talk to our modelers and see what we can do, and see if we can get a better, better idea of what that would, what kind of delay that would cause.
Looks like there's only three spots where that was the case. The, the other stops, provided the bus stops don't change, are all near intersections, and maybe it makes, maybe we need to look at where the bus stops are too, I know that...
They alternate, though, I mean, do you have a three-minute delay then every thousand feet?
Do you have it three, you'd have it every...
Delay nine minutes?
Actually, the average bus stop is thirty seconds.
Okay.
Now, you do have longer ones when you're dealing with wheelchairs loading in and offloading them, but on average, it's a thirty-second delay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not a big deal, and, or not a big deal, it's not a huge blockage of traffic.
Right. When I heard three minutes, and I'm thinking, three minutes, three times, that's nine-minute delay every fifteen minutes.
I mean, that's, that's assuming that everyone's, that every bus is stopping at every stop.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
And loading someone with the, that needs the ramp.
And a couple of those stops in between there were at the roundabouts, so, you're, you're, well, you'll have the opportunity to pass that bus and not, you know, not be stuck behind the school bus for the entire forty-five-minute trip.
It's funny, Bethel, because one of the things is, if you go with just two lanes, you know, on Bethel, no, no center turn lane, then the, uh, traffic coming in opposite direction has to stop for a bus stop.
Yeah.
And, you know, which would, would slow, if you had a center turn lane, they don't have to stop, so...
For traffic on the other side.
Traffic on the other side, so that, that will be an interesting point.
Yeah.
Uh, because we use, you know, as Bethel becomes more and more, um, really, uh, housing developments are going in there, we're going to have a lot of stops on Bethel.
Will they be on Bethel, or will they be on side streets, do you think?
Most of them will be on Bethel.
Okay.
Councilmember Deener?
Um, with the all-in price tag of fifty-four million dollars, I'm wondering when we get to talk about some of the funding mechanisms and grant opportunities that were identified. Looks like there's at least a half a dozen opportunities to, to consider targeting for funding, and, and I'm eager to get that conversation underway.
Well, I think I want to interject here, so the fifty-four million's actually misleading in the sense that we really need to separate out just Bethel, because that was Bethel and Sedgwick combined, and we're not planning on building anything on Sedgwick. We've, we're only doing the conceptual design now, so that it provides us guidance for development in the corridor, or if Wash Dot ever were to do anything, we would have a unified, uh, process moving forward, but we're really just talking about needing to come up with an estimate that's specifically on Sedgwick, I mean, on Bethel, and that's a much smaller number.
Yeah, we can...
And I think we've really got to look at this one bite at a time, and opportunities, maybe, maybe there's, as we're, uh, looking at these centers and around these centers, maybe we need to do more with potentially some incentives to development, and, so that potentially developers are paying for these road improvements and roundabouts for us, because it'll take us a while to get to thirty or fifty million dollars, either one.
Right, what we're going to program, or what we're proposing to program in the next biennial budget is a sixty percent design of the Bethel corridor, and then a hundred percent design of Salmonberry. And knowing that the Valier Court Walmart is potentially a developer-driven, uh, improvement to get Valier to come turn south, I met with the county last week, they're very interested in selling their properties, um, and they'll rectify the previous acquisition issues, so that those lands are available. So, that's kind of the big picture, is once we get a sixty percent design, and then that one hundred percent on Salmonberry, because that's our kind of critical path component, then the other ones we can attack in chunks, whether, ideally, it'd be nice to do right-of-way on everything, um, with non-federal money, so we don't turn it on a clock, but even at that, if we identify one of these phases and just do right-of-way in construction, or PE in construction, um, and then do the right-of-way with our own funding, following the Uniform Relocation Act, um, then we can build those, we could go to PSRC with something like that, or TIB.
TIB.
We're not going to have an entire, obviously, corridor funded, it's going to be in bite-sized pieces.
Based on this, I'm encouraged, isn't it? It's a project that can be phased.
Yes.
So we can do, uh, piece by piece, as we can assemble the funding to do it, and not, unlike Tremont, we're faced with doing it all at once.
And that was, that was one of the...
Sensitivity analysis and those recommendations.
I mean, as you, as they develop, well, the sensitive, sensitivity analysis was based on a straight-line growth, if everything grew at the same time, but we all know that the development on both these corridors is going to pop in certain places, um, based on development. So I think this is a good, is a good place to start, but I, as, as, you know, we get ten years down the road, it might be worth looking at it again, and making sure that, you know, everything is still in, in line with what we thought now, today.
I think the accident data and our, our own internal traffic studies have shown that that number-one priority is, our number-one priority on Bethel is the Salmonberry intersection. Yes, Councilmember Chang?
Can you explain the, the raised median for, I guess, phases one, four, and three? Is my understanding correct, that the only places people would be able to turn would be at the roundabouts? That between them, between the roundabouts, we'd have the raised medians to prevent any sort of crossing?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, but I think, so four has two roundabouts in it, because the Walmart, um, signal is there today, and there, so all the roundabouts end up being about one thousand to fifteen hundred feet, um, apart, and for walkability's sake, we recommend that you should, we should look at providing a crossing at least every five hundred feet in between those intersections, because that's a really long, long walk.
That's true. Other questions?
Just an observation, I'm, I'm really excited to see the multimodal, uh, components of this in the future, I think it'll be nice to see Port Orchard get off the ground with bikeability and walkability and more transit options, and so, I think that's going to be neat, when we can see this someday come to fruition.
This, this study's huge for our city to have a plan.
Mm-hmm.
We've lacked a plan. Any other questions for Elizabeth? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Okay, we're on to our business items. Seven A is discussion of the Bethel and Sedgwick corridor plan, I, I think we kind of did that, do we want to have any more discussion of this? Okay, seeing none, I'll...
Mayor, just one comment on that, I mean, I, we have a hearing tentatively scheduled for the second meeting of September, is everybody comfortable with that approach? We're going, the proposal would be to have a public hearing, and then pass a resolution accepting the study prior to next year amending our comp plan to add this to the comprehensive plan, and so, at this point, unless there's significant revisions, I, I would expect that most of the work on this is done.
Comfortable with that public hearing, about a month and a half from now?
Absolutely.
After all the comments are in.
Yeah.
Get it in the comp plan.
And then we'll get it into our budget and our comp plan, so, okay. With that, we're going to move on to seven B, which is adoption of a resolution approving the collection of funds for the 2018 Chimes and Lights Tree Decorating Contest. Clerk Reinderson?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So in celebration of the twentieth anniversary of the Festival of Chimes and Lights event, the committee created a new event downtown, Bay Street Tree Decorating Contest. Applicants will pick up a planter along Bay Street, pay an adoption fee of fifty dollars to the city, which goes directly towards the purchasing of the trees, and decorate their fresh tree. There are fifty-eight planters available. The applicants will start decorating their tree on November twelfth, and must be finished by November twentieth for Santa to judge. Winners be, will be announced during the Festival of Chimes and, Festival of Chimes and Lights event on December first. Because staff does not have the authority to collect the adoption fee, a resolution must be established and adopted by the council, must be adopted by the council for staff to collect. Staff has prepared the resolution for consideration. Staff recommends adopting a resolution allowing the city to collect funds for the 2018 Chimes and Lights Tree Decorating Contest.
Councilmember Lou Corelli?
I move to adopt a resolution allowing the city to collect funds for the 2018 Chimes and Lights Tree Decorating Contest.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Deener, any discussion of this item?
It's on.
All right. We'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving the collection of funds for the 2018 Chimes and Lights Tree Decorating Contest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're on to seven C, adoption of a resolution approving the Dunmore Final Platte McCormick Woods Phase Three. Count, Mr. Bond?
Thank you. The final plat application that is before you tonight is for parcel E of McCormick Woods, which is now known as the Dunmore Platte. This, uh, division was approved on June twentieth, nineteen ninety, by the Kitsap County Hearing Examiner. A final environmental impact statement for the McCormick Woods Plan Residential Development was issued August thirtieth, nineteen eighty-five, and subsequently adopted by Kitsap Party as part of the approval of the McCormick Woods Phase Three Preliminary Platte, approved on June twentieth, nineteen ninety. The Dunmore Platte creates fifty-four single-family residential lots and... The Dunmore Platte creates fifty-four single-family residential lots and five tracks. The applicant has installed or bonded for roadway illumination, road sidewalks, landscaping, water and sewer, and storm drainage improvements. Streets within this final platte are for public use and will be accepted into the city's road system. The recommendation is for the adoption of a resolution granting approval of the final platte of Dunmore.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution as presented granting final platte approval for Dunmore Platte.
Second. Councilmember Rosa Pepe seconded. Anyone wish to discuss this item? Are there any questions for Mr. Bond? We'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving the Dunmore Platte, Final Platte for McCormick Woods Phase Three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to seven D, approval of change order number one to contract number zero-three-eight dash one-seven with HDR Engineering, Inc., for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen well number nine water quality retrofit engineering support. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, the City Port Orchard City Council approved contract number C zero-three-eight dash one-seven with HDR Engineering Incorporated for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen well number nine water quality retrofit construction phase, construction engineering support in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand one hundred dollars. During the original scope and budget negotiations with HDR, the city's Public Works Department intentionally minimized the engineering support service, uh, support, scope, and budget with the understanding that city staff would be able to manage the technical review of the numerous system components. In hindsight, the submittal review and approval process of the systems associated with this water quality retrofit project requires the expertise of the engineer of record. Change order, change order number one attached requests an additional twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order number one, which is an amendment to the original contract, C zero-three-eight dash one-seven, with HDR Engineering in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars, bringing the new contract total to forty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Councilmember Karchardi?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number one to contract number C zero-three-eight dash one-seven with the HDR Engineering in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars, bringing the new contract total to forty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second, have any discussion or questions for Mr. Dorsey? Mr. Clausen?
Just a comment for the public's benefit that this project is, uh, going to exceed the budgeted amount and will have to be prepared to make a budget adjustment at the end of the year, so, uh, I wanna make sure that the council was fully aware of that.
Yep, and currently, the, what was it, their contract, well, that was already approved, there's already a budget amendment in the works for this because the contract that was previously awarded exceeded the budget amount, so...
Exceeded the budget, yes, but it's gonna have to be a little bit more...
So this would get wrapped into that one also, yes, that's absolutely correct. Other questions or comments? Project's moving along well, I understand, and we wrapped up by the end of the year, right?
Yes, it's, we had some hurdles in the beginning, but I think we resolved the pump spec issue and now the, the wastewater from the restroom and the, the, uh, water treatment, we have that rectified, those were the two kinda out-of-the-gate hurdles, and I think those have been resolved just today, yesterday, so it seems like that's gonna be moving ahead smoothly at this point. There will be, we do have some changes, you know, cost differentials that we'll be dealing with, but we're, we're moving forward with it.
Hearing none, you'll be voting on the approval to change order number one to contract number zero-three-eight dash one-seven with HDR, Inc., for the well nine water quality retrofit engineering support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Onto the approval of the July twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen council meeting minutes. Sir, uh, anyone who should approve, Mr. Deener, you wanna approve that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the, uh, regular meeting minutes of July twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Clausen. Any, uh, discussion of those meeting minutes or corrections? None, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have one abstention. All right, we're on to, uh, item F, which is the six-year paving plan, I did a little car time around the city, Mr. Dorsey and, uh, Mr. Pleasance are quite busy managing construction projects, and I got the sense from the last council meeting that it wasn't gonna be acceptable not to put some blacktop down in the city this last year, so, uh, Mike gave me a number of streets for ideas, uh, for the pavement management system, and I drove around and I came back with what I thought were a good list of projects, and then most of which they shot down because of various utility upgrades or stormwater utility, uh, or ADA compliance issues, and, uh, so, um, the utility committee on Monday will see, there's also a list in here, I put in here, we really need to have a plan for our stormwater improvements as well as the street and make sure that we're tackling these stormwater and ADA challenges before we get to, uh, these residential, residential streets that we wanna pave. A lot of the streets, too, that we should be paving are detour routes right now around Tremont, and that would be ill-advised to, uh, go out and pave, so, um, the best candidate, so, the best candidates I found, at least for deploying this year's dollars, uh, if you see, there's a picture, uh, Brandy, if you could bring that up, that's a Google Earth picture in your packet that's five years old. The street was bad then and it's worse now, um, the, the res, this area doesn't, it's, there's roughly ten homes on this, on this dead-end cul-de-sac, there are stormwater improvements already, and so we don't have any ADA compliance issues, and, uh, Mike estimates, his estimate is, we would do this, be able to do this street for less than forty thousand dollars. Um, the other one that we could've considered if we had considerably more money would be the Sydney South area, um, Mike's estimate for that, I've got that in, in later years, is about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, and we have about two-hundred thousand dollars to spend total, less than than that, and we felt it was important, we talked about those designs for Sydney and Sedgwick, and then, um, we've got a little section of shoulder on Bethel, uh, we've got a gentleman that's getting off the bus, uh, down by the Mitchell Y, and we're needing to get back towards Walgreens, and it's a gravel shoulder, so our, our crews, there is gonna put down a, uh, an asphalt shoulder of about, of about three feet wide where they can along there to make that more ADA compliant, and then we talked at various points, there's this three hundred feet of water line on the Tremont project, and, um, unfortunately, it's out of the area of potential effect for Tremont, so we can't, uh, process it as a claim, uh, as a change order. When I looked at, we looked, not looked at that section of street, when Tremont's done, this will be the only section, this three hundred feet in its Clay Street to, where is it, Sunset, Sunset Lane to Clay Street, there's no stormwater improvements there, there's no sidewalk, and that's the same area where this water line needs to be replaced. If we do this project, then we will have a complete street on Tremont and all the way through the school zone on Pottery because we have sidewalks all the way rest, the way down Pottery. So, this wa, it would be a combined storm, stormwater, water utility project, we'd get a sidewalk on that street and then, you know, it gives us a complete street, and we'd at least pave that half of the street, if not all of that section of the street. So, the plan, I'm bringing forward to Marx Advertising to, uh, get these two, for these two designs hopefully in one contract, and then we would put out this Echo Court paving in a manner that hopefully we can find somebody that's got some, you know, an opening in their schedule, but I think we'd wanna award this in a manner that, we don't want anybody to pave past, what, middle of October, first of November? Middle of October, Mark, is that the, the date? Uh, it gets...
October, September, September, maybe, maybe.
And so, we'd want, we'd like them to pave it then, but if, we don't wanna require somebody to, in that short window because we could get bad bids, so we would propose to put it out with, hopefully it would get done there, and if not, then after April first, you know, and give them sixty days or so to, to finish it then, so, in that case, we would need to carry these dollars. If we award this contract, they don't get to the work, we'd need to account for that in the budget process that's upcoming, so...
And unless, unless engineering firms are non-responsive, our hope is the, the RFQ for the two design projects will be posted this Friday in the Daily Journal of Commerce and the Independent with the August thirty-first closing date, so if, if we get responses, we should be able to get them going for this design effort mid-September with the goal that they'll finish this year, and then we'll have numbers...
And then they get those two projects out for paving right after the first of the year.
Right, when would Echo go to bid?
As soon as you, I just wanted to bring this back and talk to you guys about it, but we, as soon as he can get it on the street.
Right, we, we have, we, it's, we're, we're gonna use our residential paving template that we use, photographs and basic contract and a schedule of values, so I think we're working on that now, so my goal again is we'd get something September, at least by the September twenty-fifth council meeting, maybe we'd have a contract bids in for that, so, yeah, it's, the chances of getting paving down this year are pretty slim, but we can at least issue the contract and let the contractor deal with temperature, and, you know, we just gotta make sure that we roll money over, you know, into the next biennial budget.
And really, I'm laying out a six-year plan, this isn't financially constrained, I mean, that's the next step, is these next two years, we need to make sure that, you know, Mike's gotta do some homework on whether or not we can afford from a budget standpoint to do all these and then know, uh, you know, ensuring that we've got the cash to be able to do that, it's, it's, it's a plan at this point, so, Mr. Clausen?
Just a question, the Echo Court project, about how long of a, a duration would that take a contractor to do, if you guess?
I'm not sure, what we're planning on to do on Echo is it's gonna be a, a road pulverization, recompaction in this paving, so it's, there's, I don't think there are any utilities in the area, Mike, did we see? There's no storm drainage, so...
There is storm drainage, but it's on the shoulders, and...
Right, it's out, so it could be fairly, fairly quick turnaround, but again, it's gonna be, you know, I'm looking at maple tree, maple leaves turning already, so, depends on what kind of a fall we have.
Is it a thirty-day project, a two-week project, a one-week, two-week project, two months?
Yeah.
One week?
Yeah, yeah, once they get ready to go mobilize, yeah, it's, they're gonna grind it, roll it, pave it, so, we're do, we're gonna do everything we can to get it done this year, but, you know...
I'm just wondering if there's any flexibility in our request that they could use that for, you know, a fill-in for their, their schedule, which might get us a little bit better price that, you know, with the, the weeks' notice or whatever, they could come in whenever their schedule allows and finish a project like that, it might get us a better price.
As long as they can, you know, meet the, the WashDOT standards for asphalt temperature and rain and things like that, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just a thought.
Yep. Councilmember Ashby?
I just wanted to comment that I very much appreciate both of the plans you brought forward for the, um, basically our street paving plan or maintenance plan, and then, um, marrying that with the stormwater improvement plan, because we know in many of the projects those go hand in hand, and you alluded to the, um, that we don't have prices on these yet.
Correct.
You know, these are not financially constrained at any, and I would really like to see that. Um, when I first got in council, our six-year tip was not constrained at all either, it was kind of a wish list, so I would really like this to become a document that we can use and can plan off of, but I really appreciate the work that's gone into it so far, it, I think it defines for us what we're gonna do, and I think it's information we can give our citizens.
Yeah, I, the goal is, at least the twenty-nineteen and the twenty-twenty years, we're gonna get, you know, engineers' estimates put to these so that we can include them in the budget process, you know, four and to six years out, I, you know, it's, I, I think this is some, this is an exercise we should be doing every two years ahead of the biennial budget, because we all know that five years from now, whatever's on this list, something may break somewhere that we hadn't planned on, or some development may happen that all of a sudden's impacting a, a neighboring street, uh, that all of a sudden it's in quite bad shape, but this is, you know, trying to look out, you know, tackle today and look out, you know, at least six, six years out.
Yeah.
Street evaluations and planning is another thing you could put on your resume, thank you, Mayor.
Yes. So, Mr. Councilmember Chang?
I'd like to echo what, what Becca said, I appreciate the math especially, the color-coded, um, and I guess following on what she was saying about being financially constrained, it, what I like to think is that each year's projects are estimated to cost approximately the same, for example, the twenty-twenty-three project is the same as the twenty-twenty-one project, okay.
Yeah, it, I, that'd be the goal, I mean, the, the car tab money is providing almost two-hundred thousand dollars a year, so we know we have that as a baseline, um, if you, she, those that are on the finance committee that signed off on the check register tonight, we had our first Tremont payment this year, but...
Yeah.
So, I took a big bite out of the, uh, the street budget, but, uh, you know, we're gonna, you know, there, that's the baseline, because that can only be used for preservation and maintenance, and we've got, um, some healthy dollars in the stormwater utility that we need to deploy, and we have an ADA transition plan, so, you know, there were some, you know, streets out there that, like, uh, it was, I think it's South Street, um, that it just has so many street corners on it that we've gotta get out and change those street corners out before we go out and put any blacktop down, so... All right, I wasn't, you know, with that, Marx got his marching orders, he'll get these things, uh, out to bid, and we'll try to get, uh, some blacktop in Echo Court this year for sure next spring, and then get the two designs done, uh, on the other two streets, so, with that, that ends our business items, uh, it is time for council committee reports. Some finance committee, I don't believe you've met.
Just that we need to schedule the next...
Yes.
...committee meeting, so with Noah not here, I'm not sure...
Next council, we, we talked about that at next council meeting, he will be here, and that we needed to schedule that for Sep, there was no, not a pressing need for a meeting this month.
Right, right, so at the next council meeting, we'll schedule.
Yes.
Other than I won't be here.
We'll, we'll plan a meeting, we'll get some dates from you then.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Yep, all right, economic development and tourism?
Yes, we'll be meeting, uh, September tenth, and we will begin our discussion of the, um, one-use plastic bag issue, we'll start the due diligence on that.
All right, uh, utilities, you meet Monday, I believe?
No, actually, we didn't have a meeting scheduled for August.
Right, we had canceled it, um, so I was gonna ask Thomas, we had some items that came up, so, and I know you're not gonna be there Monday, are the items that you have, can they wait until the seventeenth? This says the twenty-seventh, but if it is in September, it's actually the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Are we, should we have the meeting on the, if we have it this Monday?
We can push.
We can push it?
Okay. Okay. So, actually, then we go back to September seventeenth at nine-thirty for our next meeting.
Okay.
Seventeenth or twenty-seventh?
It's actually the seventeenth.
Okay.
Yes, the third...
Mm-hmm, it's incorrect on the, the agenda.
I'm gonna delete this, the meeting from Monday, otherwise I'm gonna show up.
Oof.
So, okay, perfect.
September tenth for nine years.
Sewer advisory committee, I saw the minutes for that, so it's coming up.
Yes, actually, we'll be having that meeting, um, this week, and that's at nine-thirty, so, and that's gonna be over at the sewer plant.
Six...
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
I'm sorry, six-thirty.
Okay.
I was fifteen.
I'm sorry.
And that's the first, that's the first meeting with the new...
The new manager.
New director, Brandy Screws, and, um, and then they've hired a new plant operator, well, at least they were gonna offer, I don't know if, he said he would accept tomorrow and sign a hundred-year contract if he got the job, but I know that they selected an individual, so, they'll talk about that tomorrow night.
All right, land use committee.
So I think we had talked about meeting on September tenth, so that we're not meeting over Labor Day weekend, uh, at nine-thirty AM at DCD, does that work okay?
Does that conflict with economic development?
Economic development.
Oh, it does, that's right. Oh, it does, that's right. You wanna push it to...
We're in a different location.
Same, we're across the...
Yeah, but I'm in...
We have the same staff and Scott's on both.
I'm on both.
Actually, I, I'm showing that the, the economic development is canceled. Was that, was that a mistake?
Yeah, we didn't cancel September. We canceled August.
August.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
That was wishful thinking, Nick.
Well, well, why don't we get back to council on that?
Yeah. We could do two in one morning if we wanted to go earlier at seven-thirty. I mean...
I can't go at seven-thirty.
Okay. Okay. All right. Let us know.
Okay.
And we'll be there.
Do you wanna just, you wanna go for the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth is open.
If that works, does that work?
Okay.
Okay. Twenty-fourth, September twenty-fourth.
Seven-thirty?
Nine-thirty.
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 Got it.
All right. Landis meeting now scheduled for September twenty-fourth at nine-thirty. Uh, Lodging Techs, have you met?
No, we have not met. We are working to meet in September, early September. We have some dates, and we're getting everything together, and have some more information for you.
All right.
We're moving forward.
All right. Chimes and lights?
Next Monday, August twentieth at three-thirty here at City Hall.
Okay. Outside agencies, um, the, most of the boards I sit on, uh, didn't, took August off, so, uh, didn't have any meetings. So, nothing to report there. Uh, Mayor's report, I'm happy to report that, uh, the Police Chief and I have a meeting with the County and the Sheriff to talk about that, whether or not there's an opportunity to share space, uh, with, for a joint police department. I pulled, you know, two years ago, we did that needs and space needs analysis, uh, on City Hall, that showed us that we needed ten thousand five hundred square feet additional to plan for our future. Then we, we bought a building and moved Nick and the kids down the street. Um, but, uh, the, uh, if you look at this report, uh, the police department currently has six thousand square feet, and the target planning was forty-six hundred, which is ten thousand five hundred square feet. So, uh, if we can find a way for this to work for both sides, it appears it would allow us to, it's in the next five, seven, ten years, to move Nick and his operation back in the building and not have to add on to City Hall. So, uh, you know, if we can make it work for both sides, I think it's something we need to consider. So, I just thought I'd share that, some of that data with you guys. Uh, Tremont paving, uh, starts tomorrow, uh, so avoid it, yeah, at all costs. So, uh, but hopefully by the end of the week, they'll have it paved. They've been doing curbing, um, last couple of weeks. I've had a, um, a few upset people that have called me and written me emails, uh, about the traffic delays out there.
Will that be both roundabouts?
Just the first.
Just the first.
The second one's not built yet. So, no, it's just the first one. First lift on it, it's just so that we have, uh, not, not, don't have to drive through the dust and the mud when it rains, and, uh, continue with the detour till almost the first of the year, Mike. Is that the kinda of plan?
Yeah, if I could throw a commercial
Okay.
message in at this point. So, from sixteen up through the, the South Kitsap Roundabout, out to Canyon Court, South Kitsap Boulevard, and a little bit east, that will have the first four-inch lift of asphalt, and then the final two inches will be next year. It's important that the public understands that even though these next two days are gonna be challenging, is they're gonna have to push traffic onto the South Lane, let it cool overnight when they pave the North, and then shift over. Once that first lift is down, that, that leveling course, they're gonna be able to take the project back to, remember when we did that first detour where it was just flowing free up South Kitsap Boulevard and Round? The Roundabout at South Kitsap will be operating like a Roundabout Friday. So, it's important that the general public, 'cause right now, you're going like around a leg, or when you approach it, when it's paved, it'll be operating, and you have to obey yield to the person in the circle. So, we need to get that message out. Um, and that will be like that until next spring, until we do the final paving. Um, we'll continue to do the curving now. The schedule has curving continuing up towards Pottery, and that work will all be done, pretty much with the road closed. And then when they open that up to pave, then we'll have the building bounce between the two. But it's important that the public know that, once that's paved and it's open, and they just see a yield sign, that they follow standard yield to the person in the circle.
When may that occur? When those two could connect and you could use that, after the first of the year?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, they're gonna start, they're gonna do, six weeks, they wanna pave the base, right, Mike? Six weeks that they wanna do the base paving up at Pottery. So, at that point, potentially...
Six weeks from now?
Right. Didn't they say six weeks?
What they said was, in about six weeks, they'll start the next paving effort, which would start at South Kitsap Boulevard and work their way up towards, include the Pottery intersection, but it won't be open to the public until soon.
Right. Right.
And they're trying to get that paving down again by that October fifteenth window?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just a funny observation, since you put the, since the contractors put the curving in, the last couple of days, it's actually been functioning as a Roundabout. Even though there's stop signs there, nobody's been following the stop signs in the early morning hours. They're treating it as a Roundabout already.
It's working well.
So, it's working.
It's working well.
Okay. All right. My next item is just a shout-out to, uh, Thomas Hunter and the Public Works Crew, uh, here. About a week ago, they discovered a sinkhole that, uh, and, uh, on Bay Street, uh, it, where it intersects with Tracy, and it turned out that when that force main was put in, that, uh, that contractor decided to chisel out the top of the culvert and just put a little patch in there. And that patch, uh, had, uh, you know, what, how long ago was that, John? Twenty years ago? Fifteen?
More than that. It was eighty...
Yeah.
Eighty-three, eighty-four.
So, that, that patch, uh, wasn't working anymore, and, uh, we had a void that opened up with the hot weather. The road started to dip. So, within two days, they had, uh, a new culvert in underneath, underneath that, uh, those, that force main, and there's a gas main, and, uh, so it could've been a very serious situation this winter if, if that sinkhole would've opened up. So, thank you to them for their hard work, and they're working on, since they're down there, and on that project, they've been working on stormwater improvements along Bay Street, along, in that whole area, and, uh, cleaning out the cul, catch basins and culverts. Uh, I've had a couple of car shows since the last council meeting. Uh, the Mustang Show had about three hundred cars, and they had the ninety-degree weather, which I think kept some people away. Um, there were over five hundred cars this last weekend, and pretty decent crowds downtown. I was walking around some of the restaurants and businesses, and everybody seemed to be full and busy, and, uh, so it was a good weekend. And, uh, you know, that mid-eighties weather is, is much more comfortable on that blacktop than something in the low nineties. Um, I've been, so we're working on, we've got a camera feed on the DeKalb Pier, and, uh, we're working on creating a link on our webpage, uh, that someone, if they wanted to see if there was dock space available on the DeKalb Pier, they could click on it, you know, with their smartphone. Uh, and, uh, so in that process, it made me think, well, why wouldn't we consider doing that with our council meetings if that technology's available? So, Steve looked into that. If you want to consider that in the next budget process, it's about a three-thousand-dollar piece of equipment, and we would livestream our council meetings. I've had a few, uh, people question why we don't do that. Some jurisdictions do that. Uh, we do, uh, with our new DVR, we're, we're putting them up, council meetings pretty much tomorrow morning by, before lunchtime. It's up for everybody to review, but, uh, it's your call whether you wanna invest in that. Um, also, in the checkbook, you probably noticed, we bought fifty-four thousand dollars worth of water this last month from Bremerton. Um, we put seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand in our biennial budget, and, uh, we're nine thousand dollars beyond that now. So, I didn't think, so you'll be seeing a budget amendment for that, and I think we're gonna probably spend about three hundred thousand more this year. So, uh, we're looking, 'cause, except this month and, you know, it's a month behind. You know, you use it, and then you get billed for it. So, we're probably looking at a million dollars in the two years. So, we, we need that well thirteen and other wells as quickly as possible.
With the weather that we've been having, how much is that contributing to the amount of water we're buying?
You know, that'd be a Thomas question. Is the warm weather contributing much?
I mean, every year, you see this spike, and, you know, our usage actually hasn't changed all that much over the past couple of years. Um, I think it's gonna start going up because we're seeing a lot of new homes being built, and, you know, it takes a year to start seeing some of that. But, um, yeah, warm weather, it always goes up, but in the broader scale of things, it's, it's pretty typical.
So, anyway, just sharing that information. And, uh, you probably saw, too, in the checkbook register, we bought a couple of small copiers instead of leasing them, and we're in the process. Matter of fact, I signed the purchase order. We've gone to a Canon platform throughout City Hall and, uh, reviewed our use analysis, and the new lease machines we're gonna lease are gonna save us about a thousand dollars a month on, in our, in our copier leases. So, and part of that was buying, for, one, creating some redundancy, and, two, in the lower use areas, just buying a couple of small machines. Um, so, uh, it should save us quite a bit of money. With that, uh, that's all I have, and we are on to our next citizen, oh, Department Heads. Mr. Dorsey, what else do you have?
Uh, just that we submitted our TIB application today for one point six-two-five million for the Roundabout at Clifton Anderson Hill. So, you know, fingers crossed that we get that funding. Um, and that's about it, other than...
When will we know?
The park? How's the park coming?
Regional Park?
Uh, went up there today. Um, it's looking really good. They've got the, uh, pretty much those play areas, the concrete walls are in, they're putting in the, the seat walls, uh, doing a lot of, pouring a lot of concrete sidewalks. Uh, they got things stubbed out to do the, uh, splash pad. Um, they've ordered all the bridges, and the two bridges, they're gonna do the Big R Bridge first, and then the other bridge. I talked to the superintendent today. Um, and the, all the picnic enclosures and everything's all been ordered. Um, so, we do have some cost overruns on that as well, but, um, it's moving along really well. It's, if you haven't been up there lately, it looks amazing. Um, so, yeah. So, that's going well. Bay Street, Neptune is the contractor on that. All the concrete walls on the water are done. Um, and they're, they poured today, the last two walls, the one by the Marley and the one kinda by the Comfort Inn. Uh, so that part of it's going really well. We have a few challenges with Puget Sound Energy. Um, but other than that, we'd be ready to pave and finish up. Uh, there'll, there's some overruns on that as well. We've got some fencing and conduit issues to deal with, power issues. But, um, when you look at the product, um, it's, it's gonna be really nice to be able to walk from the Flit Ferry to the High Tide and back. Um, not that I would just do that, but you can, you can now.
You can.
So, the people that were putting up the, uh, Bridge to Nowhere passive-aggressive signs last year, they, they won't need to be up anymore. So, it'll be a nice walk. When, when will they lay the asphalt for that? Uh, they wanted to have it done before Labor Day, but I think the Puget Sound Energy issues that we encountered today will potentially delay that.
They set a pole right in the middle of where it's not supposed to be today.
It was, it's, it's a magic pole. It's like Jack and the Beanstalk, it just kinda popped up, and nobody knows why. So, we're gonna, we're dealing with that.
Never a dull moment around here. So, Mr. Bod?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Ms. Kates?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to touch base about the small cell ordinance. Uh, we're getting close to being able to bring that to you for, uh, consideration. And as you probably know, we've been working with an advocate from the small cell facility industry and getting some good input, and we've made some revisions, um, based on, on that input that, you know, just, it's some, some information about how things really work in the, in the real world that we, you know, weren't familiar with, that's been really helpful. There's been one, um, revision that they've requested, that we, it's a policy decision that we need to run past you, and as we don't have work-study session in August, and we wanna keep this moving, we thought, you know, maybe we could just, uh, sort of present it to you and see, see if we can get any input tonight, uh, which would be that, as it's currently drafted, the ordinance provides for a permit process. The, the small cell facilities come in for permits to, to install between one and thirty, uh, small cells as a sort of a network. And the, um, that would be for, those permits go for about ten, that's the way we've drafted it, for ten years, and they can be renewed. Um, franchise agreement is, you know, as you, you know, is for utilities who generally need to use the right-of-way more extensively, you know, burying cables or burying pipes. And then, they're not, they're not used that much, uh, for small cell facilities. Some cities in Washington have started using them, including City of Tacoma, City of Puyallup, City of Taquilla, um, have decided to go that route. Um, that generally gives the franchisee a little bit more flexibility and freedom to use any sort of area of the right-of-way within the city. Um, the way we've drafted the agreement now is, gives the city a little bit more control over where exactly those things are placed. Um, but if you have a franchise agreement, there's still some, some restrictions that can be placed on exactly where and, and that sort of thing. So, it's not, it's, it's not really perfectly clear which one is the better way of doing it. Uh, it's really sort of the tension between, uh, adminis, there's a sort of an administrative burden is what was, was cited as not wanting to do the permits and wanting to do the franchises instead.
Not only on them, but on us?
On them and, and on us, uh, for having to renew permits or, you know, keep up with lots of different permits. And so, there is, you know, there is some administrative burden for both parties to do the permit process way. Uh, the franchise agreement way would give, would take that off, but would potentially create, you know, a, a little bit more difficulty in controlling exactly where these, these facilities are placed, although the city would still have some, some, you know, it would, would still require per, use permits for specific sites and be able to control a little bit, you know, exactly where they're placed. So, it, it's really, it really comes down to a policy decision of how the city council wants to deal with small cells. And, and like I said, some, some cities are doing it one way, some cities are doing it the other way. So, there's not really clear demarcation about which cities or why.
And the language that we previously saw at the work-study was with a permit process.
Correct.
So, it would be changing that language if
Yeah, and it would require fairly significant changes.
To a franchise agreement, potentially.
Yeah.
So, Councilmember Kachari?
Just to comment there, you know, just, there's so much we, we need to learn about these, right? I think it's so new. So, I, I would be a little bit nervous or apprehensive going the franchise route today. I mean, couldn't we always, after we touch this and feel this and learn from it, a year from now, maybe, maybe look to see if that's something, um, you know, and look to other cities as, as this starts to really come into fruition and better understand the true burden and, um, keep some of the, the, you know, the reins in our, in our control versus just letting this go on the front end when we really don't know what we're up against?
Councilmember Deener?
So, can we be clear, or for me anyways, be a little more clear about what permits we're talking about? They're gonna need building permits, right, if they're gonna put up a, a tower or a pole? Are we talking about sort of land use approval?
They're on existing utility poles, so they wouldn't be constructing anything other than adding.
It'd be right-of-way use permits.
Yeah.
Right-of-way use permits, okay. And is there any reason we couldn't, um, slow this down a little bit instead of having to make a decision tonight?
I, I think the issue is that the legislature, the draft language that we've seen, if we don't take action before the legislature does, they're going to preempt our ability to, to have control of this in the future.
Have it tentatively there. So, Councilmember Kachari's question was, is this on next week's agenda? And it tentatively is on next week's agenda. We, we're pretty well done with it other than the question that Sharon has brought up with it.
Okay.
It hasn't, I don't think it's changed a lot from what you've last seen, and she's correct. If we don't, I mean, we don't have to take action next week, but we probably certainly want to in September or October for sure, because we wanna, we wanna get this done ahead of the legislature starting its work.
What's staff's recommendation?
Well, I, I honestly think trying to get it done next week is a little early, but, um, early September probably would be, uh, a, a good time to get it done. I, um...
I, I meant staff's recommendation in terms of permit or franchise.
Right. Um, I, I'm leaning more towards the permit as providing the city with more control, um, over the process. And as Councilmember Kachari mentioned, that we could go to a different, uh, go to the franchise route at a later date if we just, if it, you know, becomes clear that that's actually, works better for both parties.
Yeah, and I, I will just say that I think the one risk of that is that it may delay the rollout of 5G in Port Orchard. We may become a lower priority because our process is different than other cities. I did hear that Issaquah and, I think, North Bend or Bellevue, uh, somewhere on the east side, they were racing to be the first city to roll it out, and it's, um, you know... side, they were racing to be the first city to roll it out and it's, um, you know, it's here and it's, it's going in, uh, I think in Issaquah for sure right now with the franchise agreement.
Something we have solved tonight, but we've, we've gotta get out in front of this, like I said before, the first of the year.
And, and one last thing, there are revisions since the last time you saw this that you have not seen yet, so I would really feel more comfortable bringing it to the work study to let you see the latest iteration.
Okay.
Even without going to a franchise model, just because we've made changes to the draft.
So September's work study?
Yes.
Is that what we're planning for then? And then possibly bringing it back a week later if everybody's comfortable with it after the work study?
Perhaps with the, an analysis of the pro-cons of, of franchise and permitting again.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Scott, that's, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Can our phones even use 5G? I mean, how, how much do we care?
I'm told that the five, the first 5G phones are gonna roll out next year.
So you care?
Well, I don't care right now.
Well, we won't snap our fingers and, and it, it'll be deployed in our community, so. All right.
That's all I have.
All you have? Clerk Reinderson?
Nothing.
Okay. We're to our second citizen comment period.